Are we ready? Okay. Good evening, everyone. We are now in the open session of our February 6th Select Board meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have anyone here for public comment tonight? Okay, not seeing any public comment. We are going to move right into our governmental reports, and I am actually going to hand it over to Selectin Valencourt.
So tonight, we have the privilege of welcoming our legislative delegation tonight. Unfortunately, we're missing Senator Tar, but I'm going to still introduce him because I wrote the introduction. So if you guys want to join us up here in the seating that we've set up for you, I know it's a little tight, but you can spread out however you need to. But so again, I want to welcome you guys tonight. But first, before I introduce you guys, I would like to first thank Christina Manicucci. Christina served the town of North Andover as State Representative to the 14th Essex for four years from 2019 to 2022. Christina has decided to move on to private life, but we thank her for serving the community and the enormous help she provided us through the Columbia gas crisis and COVID, both through sponsored legislation and her personal interactions. Thank you, Christina. I hope she's watching for your service. And then a huge thank you to state recently appointed, recently sworn-in state auditor, Diana DiZoglio. Diana, to serve North Andover as a representative for the 14th Essex from 2013 to 2019, and then as state senator from the 1st Essex from 2019 to 2022. Diana's accomplishments and service of the community are immense and way too voluminous to be listed here tonight with the time allocated. So Diana also helped serve the community through the difficult times of the gas crisis and COVID. She continues to serve North Andover and the entire state as the auditor. So thank you, Diana, for your past and continued service to the community. So welcome, you guys. Just a quick introduction. First, I'd like to, he's not here, but Senator Bruce Tar. Bruce has served the community in the role of state representative or senator since 1991. It's actually kind of complicated reading through his history, but there was a great picture of him out there from 1991, so I was kind of wishing he was here tonight so I could share that with you. So currently, Bruce is the representative for the 1st Essex and Middlesex District in the Senate. Bruce serves as Senate Minority Leader and has done so since 2011. Although North Andover may be a small part of Bruce's district, he is always here to support the community and participate in local activities. Thank you, Bruce, for your service to the community. And then, oh, hold on one second. And then we'd like to welcome State Representative Tram Nguyen. Tram has served the community as representative from the 18th Essex District since 2018. Tram's passions are supporting working families, protecting the environment, and making our community a great place to live, work, and thrive. So thank you, Tram, for your service to the community. And now, we'd like to welcome two new members of our delegation. Senator Barry Feingold, he's no stranger to public service, first being elected to the end of the Select Board in 1995 as a very young man, and then elected to serve the 17th Essex as a representative from 97 through 2011. And then, I'm not sure if these are all right. I got them from different, trying to piece it all together because it was complicated. Barry has served the 2nd Essex and Middlesex District, which now contains North Andover since 2010. Senator Feingold's priorities include cybersecurity and privacy, and there's always a strong emphasis on responsiveness within the district. Thank you, Barry, for your service. But last but not least, we'd like to welcome Representative Adrian Ramos. Adrian won her first election to the 14th Essex in November of this last year. We look forward to working with you over the next several years and are excited for the accomplishments to come. Thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Now we turn it over to you guys.
Well, good evening. Thank you so much for inviting us to be here. I want to extend my welcome as well. It's really wonderful to have Senator Feingold and Representative Ramos joining the North Andover delegation. I know we've had such a good working relationship with you all over the years and want to continue that. And just going through some of the home rules that we've been able to do with you, I know we'll have many more coming up, but just to name a few that we were able to do the last couple of years, whether that's changing the name of the Ability Assistance Commission to getting exemptions for our firefighters so they can start working here. But we especially appreciate the relationship with you as we're going into the budget cycle, and you know that's coming up. And so this is such a great introduction to what it is that you need, how can we as a delegation work with you to make sure that we continue to support some of the things that we already got into the budget, just to name a few. We were thrilled to be working with you, especially in terms of food security and making sure we get electric chargers here in the town, and also the work to expand on healthcare access, especially behavioral health, and that's a need that we continue to hear in the community. And I think that is just so phenomenal to get that feedback from you and to be able to be a true partner with you all to get that done, whether that's in the budget, the ARPA funding, or the economic development bill, and also the transportation bond bill. And looking through some of the work that we were able to do, we got money for design and engineering, construction and permitting of the streetscape improvements in the downtown area. We also got money for two bus shelters to enhance safety here in North Andover, as well as construction of sound barriers and other traffic noise mitigation along Interstate 495. And so that's just to name some of the things that we've been able to do, and we want to make sure that we are in sync with the process that's coming up. As you know, we just got sworn in earlier last month, and now we're coming up to the budget season in March and April and I think the summer. You guys take it April, May? Also, they take it a little bit after us, but the partnership has really been fruitful in making sure that we are bringing home resources to the community. But in addition to that, you know, we're also working on a lot of bills, and I want to highlight some bills that we're working on that might be of interest to you. For instance, I filed a bill, an act relative to further testing after a CSO event, which would require testing for bacteria levels after sewage overflow in the Merrimack River particularly that would affect our community here, and I'm so proud to be filing that with Senator Feingold. We know that last year, over 800 million gallons of sewage overflowed into the Merrimack River. And this bill was developed in consultation with the Merrimack River Watershed Council, and it was voted favorably out of committee last year. We're looking forward to moving that forward and hopefully working with the community to push this forward. Also, we filed, Senator Feingold and I have also filed bills to provide, to make sure that we deal with data security as well, privacy laws. And just really exciting that we're able to work on these issues, especially with the advancement of technology, which is great, that we can have all, you know, remote voting, et cetera. We want to make sure we address that as well. And furthermore, I filed two bills that would provide protections for our seniors, one of which would keep seniors from losing their homes when they've fallen behind on their property taxes, and another one would protect vulnerable seniors from abuse. Additionally, as a Select Board member, Valencourt, I have to remember to say Select Board, Select Board. As you introduced, I have been focused on working families, and so many of my bills are really focused on how to support working families through the inflation, making sure that we are giving them deserved wages and benefits such as unemployment, workers' compensation, et cetera. And I also, as many of you might know, I have a background working as a legal services attorney, doing a lot of work with survivors, especially survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault. And so I've been doing a lot of that work, and we've seen somewhat of an increase in instances of domestic violence during COVID. And these are issues that we're still very much want to focus on, particularly as, you know, that relates to mental health and other safety issues. And last but not least, I filed bills to protect animals. For those who know me, you see me walking around with my two dogs all the time, but we were able to work in a bill to protect animals from abusers, and that was also voted out of committee last session, so we're looking forward to making sure that we continue with that. But just to note, for those who are listening who don't know, the legislature is working with a big volume of bills. We have over 6,000 bills filed already. And so I want to just note that we want an open dialogue, whether it's with the Select Board, or the town, or the residents. If you have a bill that you care about, please flag them for us, and we can certainly look into them. We'd be happy to discuss them with you, and we look forward to continuing this relationship with you going forward as a delegation to bring back resources to the district. We appreciate this opportunity to have this conversation, and I look forward to answering your questions and also hearing from my colleagues on what they're working on.
It's hard to follow up after that. I think she just about says it all, but I'm happy to be joining the delegation for North Andover as a North Andover resident, and the one North Andover resident, I guess, amongst us. You know, I am here every day. I've got kids in the school, and so I've got my pulse on the issues here. I've already jumped right into constituent issues, so I hope that people know how to contact me and feel comfortable doing that, you know, happy to jump on issues and work with the Select Board and the town resolving, you know, individual issues and issues at the town, at the town level. You know, I kept my bill filings short and sweet. I'm still looking at cosponsoring. I've actually had a lot of constituents from North Andover reach out about cosponsoring, so if there are bills that are important to you, please let me know. I know one that has been, received a lot of feedback on is the continuation of the free school lunches. I have co-sponsored that, and I'm looking to co-sponsor some additional bills around that, and that has become something that I think people have come to really rely on, and I've heard how much of a difference it makes in a lot of families' lives. So I'm happy to support that, and I understand that it's made quite an impact here in North Andover. So, you know, again, I'm looking forward to working together, working through my first budget session. I'm hoping that the other members of the delegation will help me through that process, but I'm quick to learn and happy to do so, and happy to be here and work with you guys.
Thank you, and it's great to be here with my colleagues, Representative Nguyen and our Representative Ramos. And I did speak with Senator Tar on the way over here, and he regrets not being here. He had a previous commitment in Topsfield, and he is tremendous to work with, and I'm excited to work with Bruce, and he's someone that, always full of energy, but really, at the end of the day, really gets the job done. So it's really going to be a great delegation that we have here. I think it's also important to note that, for the first time, you know, not only will we have, you know, a state representative, you know, two state representatives here, but we're going to have a state senator from Andover, North Andover. We're going to have a congressperson from Andover and North, representing both Andover and North Andover. And I actually think this is a good thing. For so long, Andover and North Andover have been split, and if you ever were to put Andover together, it'd be probably one of the top 20 biggest communities in Massachusetts. And there's really a lot of things that I think we should be thinking about together. There's so much we have in common with, you know, we're both fighting for very similar things with special education, especially with the circuit breaker. We were both reimbursed with, you know, similar amounts for MSBA, Chapter 90 money. So I hope is one of the things I want to do as your state senator is, can we continue to do more things together as communities, whether it's the chamber, whether it's, you know, the Downtown Business Association? I just think there's so much synergies that we could do more, and I'm hoping that we all can play a conduit in that. For some of the, you know, legislation that I'm involved with as well, it's kind of a hot topic thing called ChatGPT, which is really artificial intelligence. And what we did is we actually, you know, wrote a bill, and actually the technology wrote the bill. And it just shows you how powerful this technology is. And one of the things that we wrote last term, but we want to get done this year, and Tram has mentioned this, is a privacy bill. We're very, very concerned about geo-tracking, but as someone who has teenage daughters, we're very, very concerned about, you know, when they're on TikTok, when they're on Instagram, where is that information going? Who's selling that information and who's getting their hands on that? So that is something that is going to be, you know, a big priority of something that I hope we'll be able to get done. But at the end of the day, to me, it is about local, it's about being helpful, it's about being responsive, responsive. And as my colleagues are saying, is, you know, we want to hear from you, and the one thing we'll say is that no one has a monopoly of ideas, and I believe the best ideas come from the people. So please tell us what's on your mind, and don't keep it a secret. And if we can be helpful, that's what we're here to do. And, you know, as someone that was around during the gas crisis, that was a great example when we came together, but, you know, one of my proudest moments is when an elderly lady came up to me and handed me a receipt, and she couldn't get help from Columbia Gas, and we were able to get her help. And that's what this job is about, because for that person, that made all the difference in the world. So no issue's too small, but we got an amazing delegation, we got a great board, and love to do great things for the great people here in North Andover. So thank you.
May I ask a question? And it was, what you discussed is your interest in that of animals, and I just have to speak to this, it's been on the news the last few days, is the proposed wind farms and the beeching of whales and the population, well, I believe it's the right whales, that we got to go slow with that project. And then the fishing industry, of course, Bruce would talk our ear off all night with that, and rightfully so, you know, with the cod industry and so forth and so on. I also love the animals, but I also love businesses and these fishermen, and my gosh, they take their life in their own hands when they go out, as we all know. And I am troubled by that. Are we going to put it up and then find out later, gee, all these whales are being beached, and we should have stopped it when we first got signs? And then the cod industry and the other fishing industry. I don't know what your role would be. I'm just putting it out there, because, as I said, you kind of tweaked my thought when you talked about the animals. It was just all over the news tonight. So I don't know if there is an avenue for the state legislature. Is this all a federal project or?
The oceans are, for the most part, federally regulated, so.
That's what I felt as well, but.
But Bruce Tar, I promise you, when it comes to ocean, he will, he's involved with everything.
He is.
So I will definitely raise that to him.
Right in, right?
Oh, no. Yeah. There we go. That's funny. Yeah, it's troubling. I mean, especially when there is, you know, an endangered species of whale that are being harmed. I don't know. I don't know.
Well, I think that's why communication is so key, right? Whenever we work on these projects, we definitely need to hear from the people impacted, and that is the ongoing, why ongoing conversations are so important. I actually have a sticker right on my other laptop of Save the Right Whale, so this is an issue that we are paying attention to as well. But as Senator said, this probably is an issue that we'll bring up in the general delegation to see if there's anything that we can do at the state level.
Thank you. Thank you.
What I would, what we hear a lot about, and I'm sure you guys do too, and no surprise, as an engineer, I'm going to be, and I know we're at the 114 corridor, and I know that we're doing that. It's a great project, but I drive it, and we try, and the partnership with Merrimack College, it makes me so nervous, those kids walking along 114. There's no barrier, and I know that will change, but I think we just need to kind of keep our focus on that, and, you know, Merrimack is expanding, but just the safety of people walking up and down 114.
Yeah, I will say, I think it's better, thanks to the work that Tram and Senator Tar and so many other people have done. I think that blinking light is better, but I'm with you, I am still concerned, because, you know, there's still, there's still a lot of kids that don't use that.
Don't use that, yeah.
So, and Merrimack's only getting bigger, so I think that's a valid concern.
That, and further up the road, we hear about Sharper's Pond, that intersection, and I know Mass Highway looked at it once before COVID, and we've been trying to get them back to look at it again, because there are quite a few accidents. So those are kind of two spots on 114 that we hear a lot about.
Yeah, so Ralph Manicucci and I have literally been on Massioti for months and months and months, and I can assure you that we are working with them to try to bring them back, because there is a question of, do they measure it, you know, during traffic time? And so that's an ongoing conversation. Now I have these two to beat the squeaky wheel, and I think that's what we're going to have to do with Massioti to bring them back.
Because there's a new business coming in from the Middleton side, too, that's going to create some more traffic. And as you all know, on Saturday mornings, it's pretty busy with soccer and lacrosse and everything, so.
Yeah, and I would like to second the 114 issues, because it was back in 2011, and it was actually my wife who worked in student involvement at the time at Merrimack, and there was a young Chinese international student who was killed walking to stop and shut Mr. Ma, they called him. And then, at that point, we brought it to the legislative body, that was the state legislative body, and they really, can't say enough of the work, that they jumped right on it and took it up right away and worked with Merrimack. And, you know, it's not the perfect solution, but it, as Senator Feingold said, it's better than it was. So it's at least an avenue for the kids to get across the street. But I do notice now that they have the new science building, the kids are kind of wandering through that diagonal intersection, which is the worst part of 114. So we definitely need to take that up again and do something more there. And as Selectin Laura said, it was the 114 up by Sharpe's Pond Road. We get a lot of emails about that. But I do have two questions, or requests, I should say. The first is, we would really love a letter of support from this delegation for renovations up at the Stevens Estate, the stable. We call it, I guess, the stable now. It used to be called the Carriage House, but now it's called the Stable, and based on historical records. That's in serious disrepair, so we'd like a letter of support for the Massachusetts.
Is that historical? Is that on any commission or anything like that?
Yeah, we'd like a letter of support for the Massachusetts Historical Commission to grant, for a grant for the stables. And that is, it really is a significant building. I actually remember we had our junior class party in that building.
He's mentioned that a few times.
Well, it was, it was a significant, it was a good, in the carriage house, but it's the same thing. Back then, it was called the Carriage House. Now it's officially called the Stables. I don't know, how much are we looking for?
Well, the grant, the grant is up to $100,000, but when I attended the information session, they told us, don't plan on getting 100. It's probably more like 50, because they need, they only have $1 million in funding, and they spread it out as much as they can to all the applicants. It's the Mass Historic Commission, I'll get you the exact name if you want.
But I guess, the actual renovation of the building, are you going to try to get historical tax credits to do it?
I think that would be beneficial, yeah. Whatever we can do to get the building, you know, back to, right now, it's gutted.
Is there, who's the point person on that, do you know?
Laurie.
Laurie, okay.
You're going to hear that a lot. I don't think it's shovel-ready. I think it's.
No, so basically, the grant, what we'd like to do is, we want to just be able to stabilize the structure and stop water penetration, animals, things like that, that can deteriorate more. So the plan now is, if, between this grant and CPC funding, if we can get it stabilized and basically, basically gut it and let it remain that way till the next budget year, and then we're going to have a plan for the rest of the buildings at the Stevens Estate of how we're going to move forward with what we're going to do with them, whether it becomes office spaces or event spaces, or maybe even lodging for the estate. Who knows? But right now, if we don't do this, it'll fall, it's going to fall down at some point. So we need to, we need to just try to figure out a way.
So we're really just looking for a letter of support from this delegation. And is that something we would draft, Laurie, for the signature?
I can send the information over. It's. Do you want me to send that to you? For all of you? Okay. I will do that. Thank you.
And the other one is, when we get earmarks for the state budget, it would be helpful to know who to contact, who would be the person to follow up with, to understand the earmarks, and, you know, when we, given the constraints and not spending the money, so really a contact in the State House to talk to about these earmarks. And I think that would help the folks here in Town Hall, because it's difficult, you know, when you don't really know how to get more information on them, so really just someone to contact and to reach out to.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, like last year, we got the water bottle filling station, the charging station, the benches with solar power, the money for the Vietnam War memorial. So I would just, I would just suggest that, you know, just reach out to us. The earlier that you can, that Melissa can, like, tell us, say, these are some of the things we'd like to do, the better. And frankly, I think March.
And we would want to know for March so that we can draft our earmarks, because the House gets the budget first, and, you know, whatever we can't get, we try to get the Senate to help us out in their budget, which is after. But please loop us all in, because we can divide it up. And I think it's actually a benefit to you, have two reps and two senators, because those are four asks that we could have. And frankly, what would be helpful is what the project is, the estimated cost, and, like, the stage, whether it's shovel-ready or what it is that you're trying to do, that would be very helpful in terms of us drafting the earmark. And we will also update you if there are other opportunities. For instance, we still have money left from ARPA funding, and that would be, you know, we don't know what would be included in that, but as soon as we know, we'll reach out to you. So if you have projects in mind, keep track of them so that you have them ready for when we need, you know, some proposals to give them.
We always premise everything that the economy's still good, the money's flowing, but that can change. So I've been around a long time, so I've seen both sides of the equation. Sometimes it's great, sometimes we're coming here saying, it's going to be a 5% cut, 10%. I hope I never have to come that again, but just, you know. So, but right now, I think we are in position to do earmarks, and we hope we will, so the sooner you can get those, the better.
And I don't know if you mentioned it, but that Vietnam Memorial project is excellent. That's going to be a really nice addition to the town. And anybody that's listening, if we still have an audience, if you have family members, friends that served in Vietnam, you should really reach out to Joe LeBlanc, because the records aren't complete. I brought him two names, and they weren't on the records for, as having served in Vietnam. So the intent for this project is that any North Andover resident that served in Vietnam would be included on that memorial. And they didn't have to give the ultimate sacrifice, it was the fact that they served in Vietnam, and that's going to be a really great memorial when that's done. So anybody, you know, you have family, friends, just make sure you reach out to Joe LeBlanc and ensure that their name is on that list.
I definitely want to give a big shout out to Joe for all of his hard work, but really give kudos to Senator Feingold. He hasn't even represented yet, but he really helped us to get the funding through, and we're so proud, especially since my dad served alongside US soldiers for Vietnam. It meant a lot to me particularly, and I'm so really excited to support you all and that. Tell your dad we said thank you.
The first memorial, it's true of what you said. There was a member who I remember as a child who was killed in Vietnam, it was buried right near my grandfather, who was about the same time. And his wife lived in North Andover when he passed away, and nobody was claiming him. And I, you know, and I remembered it so well. So bringing it forward, he is actually on the memorial. So it really is important, and we certainly, as Dick said, we would take it very seriously and make sure that everybody is included. And a lot of the good work was also because of Ed Mitchell. We had started that years and years ago. Wonderful guy. And of course, Joe LeBlanc is fantastic, so.
Fantastic.
And, oh, oh, Mr. Rand, thank you so much. Yes. Yeah, that's what you meant to say. I knew, when you said it, I'm like, no.
He was passionate about that project, renovating that.
Yeah, he, absolutely. He's, he's a great man, just in his own right, but he really stepped up for all, he, he stayed on us and stayed on us when we had some repairs and things to do. And a lot of it was just logistics, just difficult repairs to make, but he did. Good, good man. Thank you, Laurie, for, for mentioning that.
That's all I have, but thank you for coming in tonight. And does any closing remarks or anything, or, or you can get up and get this?
Just go forward to work and job.
Okay.
Reach out.
We appreciate it.
Take care.
Okay, we are actually going to be moving on to licensing, so I will take a motion.
Chair, I'll motion, we move into licensing?
I'll second. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're in licensing.
Yeah, I wasn't ready.
Sorry.
Okay, so thank you, thank you, thank you. So, we are now in licensing, and the first item on the agenda for licensing is a public hearing application from the North End of a Quick Pick LLC DBA, Quick Pick for a wine and malt off-premise liquor license at, excuse me, I need to pick this up, 533 Chickering Road. So, I will entertain a motion to.
Chair, I'll move that we move into a public hearing?
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. And we are now in licensing. And hello, how are you?
I'm well. How are you all?
Just, if you could, I, we know who you are, but I, for the record, please.
I'm Chris Buco, part owner, manager of Quick Pick, North Andover. We're applying for this beer and wine license. And yeah, any questions? Go for it.
Can you tell us a little bit about what your plan is for the space?
Um, yeah. So, I guess, in theory, you might all know my father Billy, who's been around for a long time, too. Upon talking about it a bunch, essentially, we are aware that we own the liquor store adjacent to the store, in the same building. Any convenience store in this town seems to have a beer and wine license. This was the final available one that someone could get, so we figured we'd get our hands on it. We've had a tough time the past few years with the losing menthol cigarettes, losing flavored vapes, stuff like that. So, we're trying to supplement that income a little bit. We're obviously not even trying to compete with the liquor store that we own next to Quick Pick, but we just want to pick up a few hundred dollars a day in business. And just given the climate of the whole thing, we assume that if we could get our hands on this license and have a hold of it, rather than risk it going somewhere else, and someone putting a different location, waiting a few years, applying to have it extended into a full liquor license, it's just a safer way for us to kind of protect ourselves and fellow liquor store owners down the line. So, we just think that it's in the best interest of us, and honestly, anyone else who owns a liquor store in this town.
Where do you plan to have the beer and wine in the store?
We're going to keep it as tiny as possible. We're just going to have coolers right at the counter. They will not be anywhere accessible, other than what people can, working at the counter can see. And I would just jump to the risk of, we know a ton of kids going to that store every single day. We have extra staff on when kids come in during those hours to avoid shoplifting in general, but now with this whole thing to avoid that, but it will not be accessible to anyone, other than the people right at the counter. So, it won't be a factor with that whole thing.
So, it's just beer and wine in coolers?
Just beer and wine in coolers behind the counter.
Behind the counter?
Yeah.
I did, because this is a little bit different, I think we're all pretty clear on that, I did have our town council weigh in on it. I could read you the, the, this, this whole thing, or, no? Oh, I thought I heard, no. Did you want?
Dr. Truss has a legal opinion.
Your Dr. Truss has a legal opinion?
Yeah.
We might want to think about, yeah, sharing it.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, I understand. Okay. Well, the, one question in particular is, that it's important that the spaces, that you are not both working both places, that you have one entity and another entity. How would you propose you could handle that?
Between Mackeluns and Quick Pick?
Yes.
Oh, they're just, they're two entirely different entities. I mean, you can't take something from one store and go to the other store and buy.
You're, you're correct about that. But how would you ensure that? Is there, is there an opening still in between the two?
There's a door. You have to go through the door to get from one to the other.
But it's an open door, correct?
Well, it can.
What's your, I don't understand what you're concerned, what's your concern?
Well, be, because you're, you're connected, it almost gives the appearance of one unit, and, but they're, they're actually two.
Two separate corporations.
Right. So, we're just, I just wanted you to address, how would you ensure that they stay separate and not co-mingled?
Well, first of all, if I can speak outside.
Of course, no.
First of all, Quick Pick's going to be strictly beer and wine. Mackeluns is full liquor. I'm not going to have, you worried about people going from Quick Pick to Mackeluns or vice versa? What is the issue? I'm not quite sure.
No, the co-mingling of the liquor licenses is kind of what I'm.
As far as, you mean, as far as putting liquor into Quick Pick?
Just that it gives the appearance of just being one store, the wines are.
No, no.
That's what, so how are you going to keep it separate? Because I think your son explained.
Well, there's separate registers, first of all. Everything that's sold at Quick Pick gets rung up at Quick Pick. Everything gets sold at Mackeluns, gets, I mean, it's two separate businesses. We can't, we don't intermingle sales now, whether it be soda or chips or what have you. Everything that stays there, stays there. And everything that's on our side is on our side. I mean, we've got to obviously separate those two businesses. We could never have them start intermingling with one another. It'd be a nightmare for everybody, including our bookkeepers and our accountants.
So, so someone's in the liquor store, and they walk over to look at some, some wine in the other store. How would you, again, make sure that it stays?
You mean, take, take wine out of Mackeluns and go to?
Just have it in their hand or whatever.
No.
Just to jump up, like, we have people all the time who want to buy a soda and buy whatever at Mackeluns. They'll come and say, oh, I don't see any soda here. And we'll say, no, we have soda next door at the convenience store, and they'll have to go to the convenience store and buy soda, come back over with the soda that they purchased there, and then they'll buy the drink like that.
So, what you're saying is, you're already making sure that all sales, ring up of sales is totally separate? That it's not that you're shopping like it's all.
No, 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 that's the last thing we want, Joe.
Well, that, it's also a concern with just the ABCC and other important organizations.
Yeah, no, I wish we had that kind of traffic. We couldn't keep up with all the traffic.
Wouldn't that be great, though?
It's not quite that busy. It's pretty easy to monitor, quite honestly.
Will you have different inventory?
Excuse me?
Will you have different inventory and?
Oh, absolutely. Quick Pick will be buying its own, it's going to have to get its own credit statement, I mean, you know, credit approval from all the wholesalers. And they'll get their deliveries to Quick Pick, which will be much smaller, obviously. We're going to carry a minimum amount of products. It's basically, my theory over there is just to have grab and go stuff. We're not going to be carrying 18 packs, 24 packs, 30 packs. It's just going to be, you know, we have people coming in, tradesmen working, we have sandwiches, they'll be, grab a beer for lunch, or take a bottle of wine on the way home. It's very minimal.
So, I can get a bottle of wine with my steak tips, is what.
Yeah. But it's not, I'm going to have it really, really small. And like, if we can, I mean, I'm hoping if we can increase our business, obviously, three or $400 a day, which would be $3,000 a week, that would help our cash flow at Quick Pick. And that's really all I'm looking for. And I don't suspect it get any more than that. I mean, we have no cooler space whatsoever now in either store, between sodas and energy drinks and waters, et cetera. There's just no room. That's why I'm just going to have a grab and go right at the counter. And listen, I don't know if it's going to work or not, but I wanted to get up to bat and give it a shot to see if it works. And that's really all I'm trying to do there. And that's my thought. And, you know, maybe, I was thinking, I would put a sign at Quick Pick and say, you know, 18 packs, 30 packs, 24 packs, go next door. So, maybe if people who weren't in Mackeluns were at Quick Pick looking for beer but wanted more, I could send them through the door and maybe gain some business next door from there as well. I was thinking as a retailer. But that was my, my, my thought.
In a way, it might screen it out a little more, too, because you go in to Quick Pick, you buy milk, instead of having to go next door to buy beer, you got beer right there as well. You one register, one visit.
Like I said, I said, very minimal stuff that they're going to have there. I'm not, you know, it's not going to be, I don't have the room anywhere. And like I said, just to supplement the income, if it works, I can't guarantee it's going to work, but I want to try and see if it does work. So, we'll, we'll find out if we get the license.
So, you're talking about product that's bottled. So, say someone comes into the Quick Pick and says, gee, I'd like to, you know, we're having a big family cookout. I'd like to get a keg of something.
Order Mackeluns.
That, oh, you're pointing to him, and now I'm really confused.
I'm going to be silent there.
Order Mackeluns and then get it.
Okay.
So, like I said, maybe I'll get some feed off of that from Mackeluns, if people go in there. That's, you know, I think about that on the way down here, so that would be part of my plan. But again, it's just grab and go stuff that I want at Quick Pick. You don't have the room. You just don't have the room.
In, in what you said a few moments ago, I, I got a little distracted, because there was other talk. But, so you said that all the orders for the beer and wine would be?
Would go to Quick Pick.
Would go to, to Quick Pick?
Quick Pick will have its own, its own.
You, you will not be doing the ordering?
No, for Mackeluns or Quick Pick. I said, you can't do that.
I know that. That's what I, that's why I'm asking the question.
I know that, too.
Well, that's what I thought, that's what I thought you had said. I just.
Oh, God, no. Jeez, no.
That you explained that. So, the orders from one will stay there, and the orders from the other will stay there. Because that could get you in a boatload of trouble as well.
It'll be very small. And I hope they would get larger, but it's going to be minimal stuff. And never transfer stuff.
No, you can't. No.
Are you crazy?
No, I'm not crazy. That's why I was asking you. Well, I am crazy, but that's why.
I'm not going to risk that for that, no. No, never.
Because that's a, that's a big problem.
Can I make a jump?
Yes.
If it helps, I did ask town council if you can make it a condition of the license, that the door between the two establishments must remain closed, so people cannot go back and forth. And she said, you can make that a condition, if that's a concern.
I didn't hear.
What, what our town council had said, if we, in order to ensure that it stays separate, that the door, there should be a door in between the two.
So, you want for a door? Oh, there isn't.
There is a door, yeah.
But you've got to close it then, I guess.
Lock it or just close it?
Probably just close it, I would imagine.
It's always closed anyway.
It's not going to go, it's complacent. We have flies coming in our door that goes out there, they're going, it's all.
Separate entity that you guys don't have to think about at all.
Laurie, what was your impression, that it should be closed from?
Well, if your, if your intent is so that people cannot go back and forth between the two stores through that door opening that connects the two of them, then it should be something that you can't go through. So.
Or at least, like, some sort of.
Either locked or.
They're not saying it needs to be that way. The question was, can we make it a condition?
The question was posed that you could do.
The answer is, yes, we could make it a condition.
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
What, what town council said, we could, as, as the license.
They're saying they could make it a condition that the door.
We could make it a condition that it needs to be closed at all times.
But not only closed, but not passable.
Not exist.
Not accessible.
It's called, like I said, it's closed anyways.
Right. But they're saying what town council is suggesting, is that it would be locked, and that you couldn't allow people to pass through it at all. Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, that, that's what she has suggested, we could condition the license.
Not that we need to, but that it is.
An option.
Within our purview to do that.
If it's a concern for the commission, then that is an option that you can use if you want.
I think the business owners know the ramifications of cross pollinating the two businesses, and they, I don't think they're going to allow, like, as, as Mr. Buco said, he's not going to jeopardize his primary business to sell a couple of six-packs of beer. So, I think, you know, I, I wouldn't be inclined to, you know, suggest that.
Okay, but I think that this could be a possible compromise, and just see what the board says, that you have very large, big signage on each side. What is in this store must be paid for here, and cannot go to the next store.
I tell them that if they want to come in the liquor store and buy Red Bull, and I say, you got to go buy it next door, you got to pay for it next door. If you want to buy the beer, you can go on the counter, pay for it, and then go next. No, we can never.
But I think perhaps some pretty good signage.
I will get great signage.
Oh, we'll get great signage.
On both sides. Because it at least, it at least shows that you're trying to make sure it stays separate.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Just to like, I, I know it seems insane that we're doing this, just like, why are you doing, you don't mean you have this store, why are you doing this? The amount of people who come into Mackeluns every day, probably 30, who walk in, go like this, look around, and they'll say, is there a Dunkin' Donuts in here? And you have to say, yeah, it's right through the door. I think it's just funny that we genuinely think that we could pick up business at Quick Pick, because probably dozens of people go into Quick Pick and don't even know that there's a liquor store next door. So, if it's a guy who does want a six-pack or a single tall beer or something, he might say, oh, wow, I can get it right here. This is great, with my cigarettes and bag of chips, or whatever else you're doing.
Lottery ticket.
And I think the, you, yeah, it's just, people work in really funny ways, and genuinely, we believe that we can catch a few hundred dollars worth of people every single day at Quick Pick, who don't even acknowledge that there's a full liquor store right through the door.
We hope.
We hope. So, that's really what we're going for. And I, I know, it's just funny the way that people work, and the way people think, and the way people are caught up in their own days and don't even know what's going.
It's called the impulse buy.
Yeah. But it's, it's just so funny.
The package of gum or whatever.
And with the Dunkin' Donuts thing, every single day, I'm always like, how is it possible that people don't even realize it? But it's.
Dominate the liquor, beer and wine business in town, trust me. That's not what I'm doing at all. Just to, like I said, if we can supplement a little bit, I'll be happy. But we'll find out, I hope.
So.
Does anybody have any other questions? Do you have anything else you'd like to say for right now?
Like I said, he's explained all, you know, the retail, convenience retail business, as he's told, we've been beat up with the menthols and the vapes and COVID, and that's why these other stores in town, all the conveniences that beer and wine awful liquor licenses, was just supplementing their income, because they need to. And so, that's all I want to try and do, supplement a little bit of the company at Quick Pick, and, you know, help us sell, and that's basically, I want to be like everybody else in town, quite honestly. I think it's kind of fair. And that's why I'm asking for it. I don't see anybody here with any of my competitors complaining about it. So, I don't think they'd worry about it.
I think we just want to make sure that, depending, of course, on how the board votes, that, that it's clear what the rules are ahead of time, so that we don't have an issue coming up in the future. So, that's, and I think it's better here and now, on the record. So, anybody have anything else you have, you're all set?
The signs you want. I mean, just get it to me, and don't hesitate. I'll get it up on the doors all over the store. I don't care. I mean, I want to make sure it's, we're completely clear on this.
One of your competitors, years and years ago, had this big, huge sign, like, don't even come in here if you're, if you're younger than 21 or whatever. I think it was 18 at the time. But, so, I can, I'm sure you can figure out what kind of sign it is.
You can talk to, you know, talk to the chief. We've had this ID machine. We've caught kids from Meramec, dozens of times, I would think. That's why they don't come down.
Yeah. People say, like, oh, you must have the Meramec kids back. We say, we really don't, because we don't, we don't tolerate them at all.
No, you really can't. Well, that's good, that's good to hear.
We don't need that business. You know, that's bad business.
It's more trouble than it's worth.
I was about to say that. You don't need that kind of trouble. Nobody needs that kind of trouble.
And fake IDs now are so insane.
Funny business to be had in this town.
Are you finding that the machines are working correctly, just off sort of off the?
They're always updating them, yeah. And I mean, as we update the machines, they update the sophistication of the fake ID. So, it's a battle. It's crazy.
The day we got our machine, the first person to come in, like, 20 minutes later, this is a 100% true story, Meramec kid came in, his idea was wrong, he left frantically. The information went, it goes like, right to the police station, the information. He used his real name for the ID. He was a Meramec student. They found him, and I think he ratted out like 76 other kids who got their licenses simultaneously.
The more you buy, the cheaper you get them.
Oh, my goodness.
I know that it's frantic.
Everybody's been.
And we've had a pretty bad.
All the mothers, all the mothers are gasping.
Very bad reputation at Meramec since then, even though he's an alumni, too. So, yeah, go figure. But, you know.
It's not worth it.
Sounds like you guys have a well thought out plan and.
Yeah, we'll always think.
So, with that, we'll entertain a motion to.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made.
I'll second.
Second.
Should we ask for any public comment?
Oh, thank you. Is there any, well, is there anybody here? Thank you, Dick. So we're all set. So all those in favor say aye. Okay, opposed, that's a unanimous vote. And I'll entertain.
Chair, I move the select vote acting as license and commission has approved the application from North Andover Quick Pick LLC DBA Quick Pick for a wine and malt off premise of solicitor license at five thirty-three Chicken Road.
I'll second. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's a unanimous vote. Just one last thing though, that just, well, two, couple of things. So having said that about the machines, you know that even, and any out of state license is not.
We don't even take them.
That you, you can't. It's just, it'll, it will be at your own risk, put it that way.
We genuinely laugh at people coming with a Connecticut license because that's like.
This tip off their Merrimack college.
Yeah, we know that.
And what else?
And of course, you know that fair warning, just be on your game. Don't, and, and just, you know, just be tough, do your screening and, and everybody should be just fine. So I give this to everybody, but you haven't been before us for another license since time immemorial, so.
I mean, I think this is a good move.
No offense.
I want to see me in a year and I'll tell you if it was a good move, quite honestly. It's gonna take that long to develop the whole business plan. And again, as I said, any signs that you want, however you want them, let me know and I'll gladly put them up. Cause I don't put something that you don't want.
Well, if you, if you want and you have an idea and you want me to come take a look or anybody else, would be happy to come and take a quick look. But I would just make it clear that, that way it keeps you out of the weeds.
What's purchased here stays here, what's purchased there's, yeah. I mean, that's, we know that, but we'll put up signs to say that. Beer guys would be more than happy to put those signs up with their logo on it, trust me.
So having said that, I guess, we didn't put that into the motion, but we'd like to make that as a condition. Okay. Well, then volunteer to do it as you just did.
Don't even worry about it.
We will have, yeah.
I know exactly what you want. I'll get them up.
And when will you have everything ready that you can bring this on, do you think?
As far as what, the signs?
Well, the signs and then just.
We have to go through credit apps with all of our.
Credit apps with the wholesalers. So it's gonna take a month or so to get it all done. And then that time will give me time to put signs in the doors and the doors between the stores and then the door in front of Quick Pick to let people know what you buy here stays here and doesn't. I'll take care of all that.
Okay. And could you let us know when you're all ready and ready to open?
I'll let you know when we get our first, our first delivery is coming. I'll give you a heads up.
Okay.
And you guys can come in and see exactly where everything is because it's, it's right, right at the counter.
Cause this is something different for the town, you know, having, this is something different, having to right next to one another.
It is. And I've got a plan and I hope it works. Who knows?
Okay.
See me in a year.
Glad you're trying.
But thank you.
Alrighty.
I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Good luck here.
Guys, thank you so much. Have a great night.
Good night.
Mr. Mead, congrats on your good brand.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, congrats.
Catching up with you, Bill.
Okay, so let's see, do we have what else? Nope, that's it. So I'll entertain a motion to move out of licensing.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, unanimous vote. We are now out of licensing.
We are back to new business and item A was going to be our recommended fiscal year twenty-four budget, but we are going to need to move that until our next Monday, February thirteenth. So moving on to item B, we, a vote to approve a two percent COLA increase for eligible members of the Essex Regional Retirement System per chapter two sixty-nine of the Acts of two thousand twenty-two. Do you wanna, do you wanna speak to it or you want me to read? Okay, great. Thank you. So as you may know, the governor signed the Acts of two thousand twenty-two, which allocates up to a five percent COLA increase for retirees. And each of the retirement systems need to vote on this. And that takes place through the enabling body. So that would be the, the Board of Selectmen in the case here. I spoke to the Executive Director of Essex Regional Retirement System, of which we are a member. And North Andover is actually the largest member community in Essex Regional Retirement System. And so far, no towns have responded back to him that they have voted on it. However, you have till April first to take action. In looking at what this would mean for the town of North Andover specifically, if we were to go up to the five percent COLA, it would be an eighteen thousand dollar additional cost this fiscal year and an eighteen thousand dollar additional cost in the next fiscal year. So that would be the impact if the board were to vote to go up to a five percent. We are already originally budgeted the three percent. So this is just the two percent incremental on top of what we already budgeted.
The eighteen is the incremental?
Correct.
And what happens in subsequent years after the two-year period?
I believe it's built into the base.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And where is the money gonna come from?
I was told by Lynn Savage, Finance Director, that we do have sufficient funding in our retirement allocation. Because I knew you'd asked me that question, Laura.
Where's it coming from? So, and what happens if we don't vote for it?
Thirteen out of the nineteen municipalities need to vote for it in the Essex Regional for it to be, for it to take place.
Take place, okay.
So if we don't, we would be in that, in the, in the.
And then no.
In the no pile.
And how many retirees would expect that in the town?
I don't have the exact number of retirees offhand.
I think, you know, given the, the cost of living these days, I, I think, living on a fixed income, it's, not, not me living on a fixed, but, but the folks, the retirees living on a fixed income, I think this would be something that would be helpful. I mean, you know, as we see groceries, the, the cost of groceries has gone up, the cost of gas has gone up, like your heating, your homes have gone up. It's not often that retirees get, you know, a little bit of a bigger bang coming out of their retirement. So I think eighteen thousand dollars is a small amount of money to benefit. I'm sure it's over a hundred maybe or so retirees.
Oh, I think probably more like four hundred.
Four hundred retirees from our town who serve this town. So I, I think it's a small price to pay to give them some peace of mind and a little bit of extra money in their pockets for living day to day.
Especially with the numbers of the cost of living, the percentage is, is beyond that. Hopefully it comes back down, but.
Okay. Any further comments? I will take a motion if not.
Chair, I'll move, let me just get you some. Nice wording here. I'll move the select board vote to approve the additional two percent COLA increase for eligible members of the Essex Regional Retirement System per chapter two sixty-nine of the Acts of two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you. We, item C for new business is the application of Josh Granning to use the town common on April eighth, two thousand twenty-three for a nine-hole disc golf tournament from eight AM until two thirty PM. We'd be happy to hear from you. Just tell us who you are, where you live in.
Hi, I'm, I'm Josh Granning. I just moved here to, on Mass Ave about four months ago. And I'm close, close enough to that town common where I drive by every day at work. And I just see a bunch of people walking there. I, myself, recently got into disc golf a year and a half ago. And every once in a while, I, I go down there and throw some discs out in the field. It's big enough where I've brought my basket out and, and kind of walked the, walked the commons and seen that there's a, there are enough spaces to put in nine baskets. This would not be permanent. This is just, I have friends that have temporary baskets as well. And it would just be a group of, a group of us from the community coming out and, and playing that course that I basically created. And I have a, I sent something to the town that has a map of where the holes are. So I don't know if you got a chance to see that. The whole goal was to make sure that the course, cause the disc golf is when you, you throw a disc, basically playing golf where you're trying to go towards this basket. And the whole goal in my design of this area is to make sure that no discs are going on the road or near the sidewalks, anything like that. And I wanted to make the course have out of bounds areas that deter people from throwing even close to the sidewalk. So there's, there's a row of trees coming off Mass Ave as you're going up towards the roundabout, where I'm just saying anything at those trees or anything close to the sidewalk is just gonna be out of bounds. So it's gonna be preventing people from wanting to even go close there. And all the other holes are pretty much aimed more towards starting from the outside, aiming into the commons to prevent any, anybody from being struck or anything going out like that. The group of people that I would be playing with, I, I'm co-running a putting league, which is basically just people putting from here to that easel. And it's just practicing disc golf over the winter. And I kinda wanted to open up something to start the season and kinda just throw, toss around in a, in a smaller space as a community there. And if people from the public wanted to come and watch, it would be a cool thing to kind of raise awareness to a sport that is quickly growing since COVID. So any questions, I'd love to answer them for you and, and raise more awareness about it. Yeah.
Josh, I think it sounds like a really fun idea, but I think there were comments from DPW that especially during the wet season of April, that you would need to get approval. But more than that, the common is used for gatherings and picnics and things. My biggest concern, and this is no reflection on you and what you're trying to accomplish here, is that then we'll have bocce, we'll have badminton, we could have a whole host of other things. We have lots of fields, dedicated sports fields in the town. It might not fit exactly what you're looking for, but I did reach out to a person who's in charge of fields. And, and he, he asked that you work with him to maybe find a better location, which I would certainly be more supportive of. It's just that, that, the, the common gets quite a bit of use as it is. And it's kind of a difficult site with the land. There's a lot of water. And then it would require, again, more maintenance on the, on the grass and, and so forth and so on. But I'm just thinking that perhaps there's a better location that would be more in keeping with all the money that we've put and invested into our sports fields. Cause that's actually supposed to be sort of a place for picnics and gatherings and, and maybe tossing a frisbee between a few people. But to have a, a sporting event, I, I can see, once we start one, we're almost obligated to allow others. And that could end up being a problem. So.
How do the actual, I've seen them, but how do they attach to the ground?
So there, there is no attachment to the ground. They just sit.
Okay, that's great.
But I, I totally understand where you're, where you're coming from. This is just the first place that I saw that I liked as a place. I would, I'm also pretty new to the area. So I'd, I'd love to get in touch with the person that, who, who you're talking about and, and maybe see if there was a better place that can be used.
His name is Rick Gorman and he's in charge of the, the youth center, which is a little bit further up the road where the, the, it looks like a big red, red barn and a house. That's where his office is.
Liz requests us to use the common, so we'll direct him accordingly, depending on what.
Well, he, he asked me, so I answered his question.
Yeah.
Is it, who's gonna play, I guess, who's gonna come and play? Is it gonna be, like, is it your group or are you inviting, like, other people to come?
So what I was planning on doing was opening it up to the, the people of the putting league to see how many people are interested.
Yeah.
Thirty-six people would be the max amount of people that I would be able to do anyway because it's four people per hole.
Yeah.
And we have nine holes. So I would, I would see how many people there are that would wanna play from that group. And there's sixty people in that group already. And if, if there were any other people, I have, I have other friends that are not part of that, part of that group that I would ask to fill the, fill the space. It's, I, I, there is a way that I could open up to the public, but it's just not a lot of spots open any, at any point.
You need to have, so, yeah, you have to, everybody's gotta rotate around, right?
Yeah.
And you're just stepping and throw, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar.
I can, I can, I can show you what, there, there, like, for short distances from like hundred to two hundred feet, you, you kinda just do this. But I have a couple of holes that I planned out that would involve like a full throw.
Yeah. Right. Cause we're not talking about like a soccer game or.
No.
That kind of.
And you wouldn't, there are no cleats allowed in the, in the sport either.
It's just sneakers. And my only thing is that we allow fitness on the common already. We allow the Zumba, Zumba.
Right. We do, but it, they're, they don't take a, a good portion of the common. That's the thing. It's kind of a small group in a smaller area.
Right.
And it's, again, I just, I, I'm really concerned that, well, we will find ourselves using that common. It's a historic area. It's, it's a beloved area of the town. The church across the way was on a UNICEF Christmas card in the nineteen sixties. And it was done by our founders and they literally took houses off the site to make this common as beautiful as it is. So I think we, it is my belief that when you allow one group, it would be wrong not to allow other groups unless it was totally detrimental. And I, I'm just very concerned that our beautiful spot, also concerned about the neighbors, the wear and tear on the property, that I think it would be helpful if you would consider maybe working with Rick Gorman for a different location. That's my opinion.
Would it be easier if it was a more flat surface, open area for you?
Um, the, so there are a bunch of different types of disc golf courses. There are courses that are basically just in the woods that have, that are carved out that you play through. It's basically you're walking through the woods while you're playing disc golf. It's one of the, it's a really cool experience if you ever get to, get to do that. There's a course in Haverhill called Clement Farms where it's, it's, they opened up basically this forest with walking paths and it was not, it, they didn't have any clearing of the brush or anything. And then they opened up this course. And since there was regular traffic through the course, you have, you have more people that are able to walk through it because all of the thorns have been taken out. All of the poison ivy has been taken out. But more to, it's, the, the more wide open a space is, the less enticing it is to play disc golf in because there's no obstacles to move, maneuver the disc around or to, to, to place shots specifically.
Really intrigued by the whole thing, actually.
Yeah, it's.
Well, I, I would be supportive of it. I, I understand what selectman, Smedili, that's like what members still, Smedili is saying and I, and I respect that. And I think that's, it's a good point. I think early April is a time when it's still, you know, the season's still early and I don't know there's a lot of people on there. But I think that's certainly something we have to be concerned about is, you know, there are families that go there. A lot of people, especially in the early spring when people can start getting outside again. The other, the other issue is the, is the condition of the field. If it's, if it's really, really wet, is it gonna get torn up? But, so what I would suggest, Josh, is maybe, maybe we, we table this. We have another meeting coming up, I believe, next week, right? Maybe we table this and maybe that gives you an opportunity to talk to Mr. Gorman and see if there are other options available. I mean, we have the middle school. Now, some of them don't offer the same challenging terrain. We have other locations in town that might be more, even more challenging. Shoppen's Pond, the town farm. There's a lot of places that might even be more challenging. Maybe eventually we could use it, four hundred Great Pond Road. We could have a nice golf thing going on there, but we don't, we don't have that yet. But there are, but maybe, you know, we can table this for a week, give you an opportunity to just touch base with, with Rick, see what he has for ideas. And he has a lot of ideas. And I, I feel that he would be supportive of this because he's supportive of anything with that involves recreational activities. So maybe just give him a, a call and then maybe we'll have you come back next week. And if it's okay with the chair, we can get you on the agenda early so we don't have to, you don't have to sit.
But as long as he has an opportunity to meet with Rick for.
Yeah.
If you can, we can wait for the next meeting.
I am going to be out of town starting Wednesday till the end of the weekend.
So just reach out to him and figure out a time.
Yeah, just call him.
Can I just make a suggestion if you're gonna go that route? Can we, can we wait to find out what his conversations are with Rick first before you ask him to come back? Because if they resolve it, then we can just take it off.
Sure.
And then he doesn't have to come back to say, I changed the location. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
He's, he's great to work with and he's pretty much in charge of, you know, the fields along with all the other families.
I hope that he'll be able to actually find you a location.
I hope that he'll be able to actually find you a location that will make your game more fun than the common. But overall, I mean, I I am, I think it's great that we use our common for things like this. I think it's going to introduce people to a sport they haven't ever seen, nothing that's attached to the ground. It's a gathering area. We have concerts there, we have shows there, we have exercise classes there, so I
I mean, we have fairs that put a lot of wear and tear on.
Concerns about that, but by, but I would recommend that you talk to him just to, and and I'm also willing to just give it a try and see if it works out. We can always say no the next time because it didn't work out, right? And also, I was hoping you'd have, like, instructional hours, so we could come watch you figure out.
I I have been helping out with other people. I'm I'm a pretty decent disc golfer, so it is a, it is fun to help people out.
Where every, that you have, like, a demonstration or something.
I'm also interested, I don't know if this is something around here, but if if there's any, like, local youth centers over the summer that I could I could help do something.
Yes, great person to talk to. So, yeah, definitely, this is not, I mean, but again, we actually probably have locations that will make your game more fun, so.
So the youth center has a ropes course in the woods that might
That might work.
Yeah, there's like a ropes course in the woods that I have in my mind as someplace you really enjoy. And that field that's right in front of it.
And Rick would, I'm sure, I mean, he runs a six-week summer fun for K to six, oh, through the middle school, K to eight, right? With what's that?
Yeah, that actually would be great for.
Yeah, that would be a great thing to introduce the kids to.
So we're, I'm thrilled that you came to us. I think it's awesome.
Never be able to work it out.
Yeah, definitely.
Awesome.
So speak with him, and then if we need to put you right back on to come back and see us, we will.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your patience and for
We love your passion only being here a few months.
Oh, it's amazing. The amount of the community that I've been able to be a part of in this short period of time really shows how many, like, people that are really
This is my plug, to go on the website and look at other volunteer opportunities in the town.
Maybe even joining youth centers, apologies. And teach the kids how to play.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your patience.
Okay, moving on to consent items. I'll take them together. We need to accept a donation in the amount of one thousand dollars from the estate of Muriel Katschker to the senior center and accept a grant from the Essex County Community Foundation in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for design and engineering of streetscape improvement in the downtown.
May I just speak to the Muriel Katschker one?
Sure.
I was a friend of Muriel Katschker, and just to share this story, a lot of you have met her, so you know. She was a retired lieutenant colonel in the United States Marine Corps when women were really not part of the Marine Corps. And she came up through the ranks and was in the administration. You know, back in the day, her day, you know, the women tended to be part of the nursing corps or the administration. You know, they'd be in the typing pools and so forth and so. She went to BU, and she went to Harvard, and and she became a lieutenant colonel in the Marine Corps, so. And she loved the senior center, so this is very nice. So I just, again, just, she is gone now, obviously, from the way this is written, but just salute right back at you, so this is great.
Thank you. No other comments, I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the select board accept all consent items.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next item is to approve the open session minutes of January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Has everybody had a chance to look at them? Okay, any changes? No, no comments? All right, I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the select board approve the open session minutes of January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three as presented.
I have a motion. I'll take a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Thank you all. We have no items under old business. We do not have a town manager's report, right? No, no subening for that. And so we'll move on to select board updates and comments.
I do have one, but I'm looking for the calendar, so I want to make sure I get it exactly right. So with respect to the four hundred Great Pond Road Steering Committee, we'll be having a public forum for residents to come in and share their ideas and their thoughts and to really to learn about the property and what has been done there so far, what the, what we've been discussing as a as a board and what we need to come to for town meeting. So this open session will be February sixteenth at six thirty in the senior center. We'll have a short presentation and then open up the the microphone to the residents to hear what their thoughts are on on the property and what some potential uses for that property could be.
Awesome. Thank you.
You don't have to tell us, but have you had any really interesting ideas? Or pretty much?
Sure, I mean, there's been a lot, so there's, it's, you know, it's in, there's a, there's a wide swath of things, right? From, and and I'm not saying this is is going to happen, but I mean, from, you know, taking the building down to moving the building to using it for community space. Our youth and recreation director provided a plethora of ideas that he thought could be done with the with the property. There's some challenges with the property because we don't have, you know, there's not a lot of adequate parking on the property. There's not adequate sanitary facilities if we were to create, so we'd have to address some of those concerns. The property, although it was originally owned for three point two million dollars, is not in the best condition. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. If you look at, if you ever had a chance to look at it from the lake, you can see there's a lot of work that needs to be done on the exterior, on the roof. So there's there's work to be done there. So the the board, the committee, has come up with a lot of interesting ideas and a lot of, but it really kind of boils down to a few different high-level ones where there's some some action taken with the building, whether it's to remove it or to take it down, use it for community space. Potentially, there's one buildable lot on it, maybe sell that buildable lot. So there's a lot of, a lot of ideas and a lot of ways that it could go. So that's why we'd really like to get some input from the community to understand, you know, what what's the thoughts are on the building and and the property. And, you know, to kind of take it from there. The goal is that we have an article crafted by town meeting to present to the town. Whether that article is a definitive plan on what we're going to do, or maybe it's a plan for a plan, or it's a request for funding to do more research on the condition of the building, whether it's architecturally, if it's sound. There's also some discussion that's been, you know, the building is not original. The building originally was a much smaller building, and it was actually used, but I forget the family, maybe the Sutton family, to, I apologize for, I'm getting the name wrong. It was used by a prominent North Indian family as a place to go have lunch. And it was really not there, it was never, it never had bathrooms, it never had a kitchen. It was like, they would bring, they would bring their lunch, it was a much smaller building, and they would bring their lunch there, and they would have lunch overlooking the lake.
Turn it through a picnic.
And then they would pack, then they would pack up and go home. But that's also some, been some thoughts. I mean, imagine, every room overlooks the lake. And imagine having, you know, some Adirondack chairs there, that folks could just go and grab a book and read, overlooking the lake. And maybe they have that, you know, that picnic lunch bag again. So there's a lot of thoughts about what to happen. So we'd love to have folks come out on the on the sixteenth at the senior center and, you know, share their ideas and their thoughts.
I thought we were going to get to go to the house.
Well, there's there's logistical issues with that, because, again, there's not a lot of parking.
And it's winterized.
It's not winterized, there's not a lot, there's no sanitary facilities, it's not ADA accessible right now. So there's logistical issues with with having folks go and visit the the property. So it will be here, and we'll have, there'll be a video, though. We're going to have a video, and it will be, it'll be narrated by Peter Boynton. So it'll be just kind of taking you through the house, the North Indian cam is videotaping it. I don't know if they'll have a drone involved, but it'll be taking you through the property and showing showing the property.
Peter Boynton's been on that lake a lot.
Yeah, so he'll be, he's, he's going to be one of the folks narrating the video.
That's great.
Thank you. You guys have been, have put in a lot of work in a short amount of time, so this part sounds really exciting also to hear from the public. Any other updates or comments? I'll make a general appreciation for all of our first responders the last few days. They've been very busy responding to burst pipes and things like that, things related to the weather, lack of heat and things like that. So I know they've had a lot of calls and had to help out a lot of people, which they always do, but I just wanted to give a little shout out and say thank you. And with that, we will adjourn.
You know something, it does remind me of one thing.
Our next meeting, that's right, next Monday at seven PM here.
I'm just going back to that point, though, anybody who's been away for a while could come home and turn the water on and find out that their pipes are broken. So I don't know if we should let people know if you've been away for a while, be
I feel like they put out a lot of good tips for that kind of thing. I know, just so hopefully people are paying attention. Yeah, it's hard.
Be careful.
It's hard. It's gonna be a long week for some people, I think.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.